All of a sudden, I saw a lovely expression on my face that just stayed and stayed. So apologies for that. I think we're moving into doing a bit of a test poll if that's up next here. Perfect. So just last housekeeping reminders. If welcome to those of you who are joining us. I think we're up to about 33 guests and 22 voters. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. If you did not have a chance to review the meeting materials, they're in links on the right. And members will have access to voting as well as the Ask a Question button. And if you do have resolutions to submit from the floor, please do so as soon as possible because we'll need some time to enter that into the system. So just before the meeting starts, would love to run a fun practice poll for all of our voting members. Voting members should see the poll question pop up on their screen. Select the option that best describes your favorite canola moment and then click Select and Confirm to submit your vote. It is a double confirm system, so be sure that you click both Confirm and Submit to have your ballot cast. And a reminder to all of our guests, you will not see the votes during your screen. You'll be able to see the results, but you'll just see a voting in progress screen as we go through that. So if we can put the poll question up, we'll get that started. Looks like we have 23 voters registered at this point. So our first poll question of this morning, what best describes your favorite canola moment? Oh, we have some great quick on the trigger here, folks. This is great. The answers are, in no priority order, taking a long walk through a flowering canola field, seeding canola on a warm spring day, harvesting canola in the glow of the sunset. Probably my favorite, watching the sunrise over a canola field from the cab of your sprayer. Or finally, and probably most apropos for today, feeling the bite of winter on your fingers when you were checking canola in the bin because holy Dinah, it's cold out there. So we're up to quick math here. 21 of our 23 voters have submitted, so I think we're looking pretty good. Thanks, everyone, for your quick, quick fingers there. Hopefully, we can get everyone in, just a couple of voters left. Make sure you get a chance to try out the voting system here before we kick off. Okay, we're up to 22. We got, oh, it looks like one of our voters dropped off, so I think we're good. We've got all of our voters in. So we'll be able to post those results. You'll see that in just a moment. It just takes us a second here to, to get the voting results up. We'll just see that pop up in just a minute here. Better make sure I'm still good. I haven't frozen. We're all good. Okay, perfect. I'm not seeing it up on the screen here yet. So we'll just make sure that comes up. We do have a little bit of a delay in the, in the video feed. We've done that on purpose because it does help with the bandwidth. We recognize that it's, it's always tricky to have a video call, especially with the state of rural internet. So making sure that we're doing what we can to manage that. All right, so we should be good. We've got 27 ballots processed. I think we can probably release those results. There we go. So it's, yeah, so it should be coming up shortly here, I think. And just a reminder, the results may show up just below the video feed on your screen, so you may have to scroll down to actually see the results. We'll see that pop up in just a moment here, I think. Oh. Oh, great. Okay, I'm not seeing that on my screen there, Ron. Okay, so what I'm seeing in the background are harvesting canola in the glow of the sunset gets a resounding, a resounding win here with 17 votes. We had five for taking a long walk through a flowering canola field, five for seeding canola on a warm day, and a couple of folks enjoy the sunrise. So nobody likes the bite of winter in their fingers. That's a shocker. So anyways, I think we are pretty well good to kick off here. So just a few minutes behind, but I'm sure we'll catch up. So with that, I would turn the screen over to our President Clayton Harder.
Thanks, Delaney. Thanks, Delaney. I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2021 Annual General and Special Meeting for the Manitoba Canola Growers. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We are grateful for the technology that allows us to meet virtually these days to carry on the business of your association, and we appreciate all of you for taking the time to join us today. Just a few reminders before we kick this off. Voting members can ask questions throughout the meeting using the Ask a Question feature at the top of the screen. We have time scheduled throughout the meeting to address questions. Categorizing your questions using the dropdown options will allow us to respond to your questions at the appropriate time. If you have a resolution from the floor, we would ask that you get that in as early in the meeting as you can, so our team behind the scenes has time to set up the necessary motions. Note that the system we're using to manage a large meeting with verified member, with verified member voting limits the number of people who can speak during the meeting. Our members who have sent in resolutions by the deadline will be able to speak to them, but our members in the audience will have to use the Ask a Question button to discuss the resolution and raise questions. Members that pre-registered will be prompted to move second and vote on motions throughout the meeting right on this screen. A reminder that it is a double confirm system, so be sure you click both Confirm and Submit to cast your vote. There is a 10 to 12 second delay to help manage the demands on your internet bandwidth, so it will take a moment for us to address your questions and to display the results of the votes. If you find your video freezes during the meeting, try the Refresh button on your web browser. It may be hidden up in the right or left corner near the address bar. If you lose sound, you may have been muted when coming into the meeting. You may need to click the Volume button on the video display on your screen to unmute or increase the volume. If I lose my connection, we have Vice President Chuck Fossey on standby to step in. Delaney will be helping me out today by reading the results of the votes, which will also be shown below after the vote is closed. You may have to scroll down to see the results. Everyone should have received a link to our AGM package prior to the meeting. If you have not had time to look at it or would like to reference it again, links can be found on the side of this screen. This meeting will be recorded along with questions and comments. If for some reason we are unable to get to a question, we will reach out following the meeting. With all the details out of the way, let's get started. I'd like to introduce you, introduce you to our Board of Directors. I'm Clayton Harder. I farm just outside of Winnipeg, and I'm the President of the Manitoba Canola Growers Board. Our Vice Chair Chuck Fossey, who farms at Starbuck. Curtis McCray is our Treasurer, and he farms at St. Andrews. And our Secretary Bill Nicholson farms at Shoal Lake. Anne Bailey is a Director from Dakota. Nicola Dow is the newest member of the Board who farms just outside Portage Le Prairie. Our election in the fall of 2019 saw only three candidates run for four positions, leaving a vacancy to be filled. The Board decided to open an application process that saw nine farmers apply for the role. Following interviews, Nicola was selected and joined the Board in the spring of 2020. We would like to officially welcome Nicola to the Board. Last but not least, Director Jack Fraze, who farms down by Winkler. Up next, I'd like to introduce you to our staff. Up first is our Executive Director Delaney Ross Burtnak. Leanne Campbell is our Communication Manager, and Karina Lep is our Grower Engagement and Extension Manager. Ellen Pruden is our Canola Eat Well Director, who works alongside Canola Eat Well Manager Jennifer Dick. And Brenda Dick is our Research and Market Administrator. Finally, Finance Coordinator Oksana Taran, and the newest member of the team Samantha Simon Verrier, who joined the team in January as a Chekhov and Member Administrator. Welcome to the team, Samantha. We're now going to move into the approval of the agenda. I hope you have all had time to review the agenda that is now on screen. This time, I would ask Delaney to check the Ask a Question feature to see if there are any additions to the agenda. While Delaney is looking for that, I want to remind members that you can ask questions at any time throughout the meeting using the gray Ask a Question button, the top right-hand corner of your screen. Also, if you have any late resolutions, please enter them in the Ask a Question box as soon as possible. Delaney, are you seeing any additions to the agenda?
Thanks, Clayton. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, yeah.
Excellent, perfect. So we don't have additions to the agenda, but we do have a question. Wilford Harder is asking why we can't talk instead of typing all of our questions. Did you want to address that? Do you want me to address that?
I'll, I'll start off. If I miss anything, you can add it. I agree, not being able to have people speak during a meeting is, is difficult and is not engaging to just basically see my giant talking head in front of you for this time. So it's disappointing. I think in the future, if we have to do this during another pandemic or next year, ideally, we'd be adjusting things to allow for people to speak during an AGM. Delaney, do you have anything to add or like why we can't?
Yeah, no, that's, that's great, Clayton. The, the system that we have, the way that it's set up, the individuals who can speak during the meeting need to be set up as presenters. And the more presenters we have, the greater challenge it is with, with bandwidth and recognizing that rural internet can be a challenge. That, that's something that's difficult to do and not something that we can change at this point. So we do encourage everyone to be able to, to make sure that you're typing your questions in, and we'll do our best to address those. But that unfortunately, this system, while it's great in that the voting happens all in the same system rather than using two different systems for voting and video, there are some limitations, and that, that's one of them. So thanks, Clayton.
Perfect, thanks, Delaney. If there are no additions to the agenda, then I would now like to call for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Voters will see the motion pop up on their screen along with a box looking for a mover. The first person to click on Move will be our mover, and same for the seconder. Once we have a mover and seconder, the vote will pop up for the members to vote. Now remember to click Confirm and Submit.
Curtis McCray has moved and Bill Nicholson has seconded, so we're good to move ahead with the motion.
For the vote, okay?
Yeah, for the vote, sorry.
Thanks. We'll give everyone a few seconds to enter their votes. Once the voting window closes, Delaney will share the results, and members will see the results of the vote show up at the bottom of your screen.
Clayton, there is a question here. Yeah, it'll be a little bit of a delay. Just, there is a question about video feed frozen. Probably won't help for me to answer that if the person's video feed is indeed frozen, but if the video does freeze for anyone on the call, you can try hitting the Refresh button, and that's up in either the top right or top left typically of your screen, the little circle arrow button to try and refresh it, and hopefully that will come back for you. When you do come back, it's entirely possible that you might be muted, so do make sure that you, that you check that if you have no sound to unmute it. And there's a little volume button at the bottom of your video screen.
Thanks, Delaney. I know yesterday when I was at the Pulse AGM on my iPhone, I had to log in a couple different times. My iPhone wasn't the best thing to use if people are using that.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a little bit tricky with the, the system and internet. So it looks like we have all our votes. We have 34, 33 ballots processed, so I think we're good here with this, this motion. 34 are in, and all 34 are in favor. So I'm sure we'll release the results in a second here to, to show that, but it looks like we're in favor of the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Delaney. That is carried. Moving on to the minutes, referring to the minutes from our 2020 AGM sent out prior to the meeting and found linked to the side of the screen, I would ask if there are any errors or omissions of the minutes. If so, I'll give you a few moments to enter it into the Ask a Question box at the top right of your screen. As many of you know, our 2020 AGM was held in Winnipeg as part of the Crop Connect Conference with the Manitoba Canola Growers hosts, which the Manitoba Canola Growers Association hosts in conjunction with other commodity groups in Manitoba. We look forward to be able to host this event again, hopefully in February of 2022. Delaney, do you see any errors or omissions submitted?
I haven't seen any questions come in here yet, Clayton. We'll maybe just give it a second. I know it takes a moment to type things in, so just make sure that everyone has a chance to enter if they do. Nothing's popped up here so far. So.
February 2020 feels like ages ago, so hard to imagine people being able to recall that event.
That is true. Okay, so we do have a question. Oh, okay, so Brian Chorney and John Chorney Farms has posted that they're, they're getting motions to vote, but no live feed. The play is selected and sound is unmuted, so a little bit of technical difficulty here. So, yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, okay, great. Thanks so much, Ron. Ron's giving us a hand in the background here, getting things sorted out. So I don't see any other questions related to errors or omissions, so I think we're probably good to go ahead here, Clayton.
Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to adopt the minutes from our February 13th, 2020 AGM. Do we have a mover and seconder? Is that request on screen now?
Yes, yeah, we do. That just came in. We've got Charles Fossey has moved and Dawn Tyson has seconded, so we're good to go ahead there.
Okay, thanks. I would ask one more time, Delaney, are there any more late or errors or omissions being noted?
I'll just double check here. Yeah, I don't see anything else coming in, so I think we're okay.
Okay, seeing none then, we'll open up the motion to a vote, so please vote now. While you're all voting, I'd like to also thank Elena from Planners Plus and Ron and Adam from Artisan, who are quietly working behind the scenes to keep us on track today.
Excellent. Yeah, they've been doing a great job. It's, it's a lot of meetings this week, and they've been keeping us moving, which has been fantastic. So awesome, we have some quick voters today. We have, we're up to 27 out of 30 voters, so just about there. I think we're overwhelmingly in the positive. We've got 27, 28 in favor at this point, so I think we're, we're in good shape.
Okay. Well, thank you, Delaney. That's carried. It's time now to share 2019, 2020 Annual Report highlighting programs, events, and successes from August 2019 and July 2020. This will be immediately followed by updates from our national partners at the Canadian Canola Growers Association and the Canola Council of Canada. If you have any questions, please type them into the Ask a Question box, clearly stating who the question is for. We will take time to answer questions following these reports.
Farmer-funded and directed research is a key priority for Manitoba canola growers. Our farmer-directed research committee invested over $830,000 in 54 projects last year, selecting projects that will offer better ways to grow canola, control pests, and protect the ongoing productivity and marketability of Manitoba's number one crop. Thanks to partnered funding, our investment was leveraged nine and a half times to a total of $6.6 million in collaborative research investment this past year. As we do every year, our committee consulted topic experts to confirm that projects are relevant, a valuable investment, and contain sound methodology, all while meeting the greatest priorities of Manitoba's canola farmers. Our continued focus is to put agronomic tools in the hands of farmers and agronomists to help maximize net income on farms across the province. Completed and ongoing research details can be found under the Research tab on our website and through our interactive communications network. Manitoba Canola Growers actively engages with partners and government to amplify the voice of farmers on key issues, both provincially and on a federal stage. Within Manitoba, our years of lobbying to increase the biodiesel mandate from 2% to 5% has yielded positive results. Extensive work exploring canola's protein market potential has also shown great promise. Farmers were well represented during the creation of the COVID-19 pandemic response in Manitoba, as we collaborated with multiple groups to ensure agriculture and its supports were classed as essential services. Thanks to federal advocacy partners at the Canadian Canola Growers Association and the Canola Council of Canada, farmers' voices have also been heard on international trade, improvements to business risk management programs, and federal regulations relating to biofuels. It takes individual voices coming together to lead successful advocacy on behalf of the farming community. See how you can share your farm voice under the Advocacy tab on our website. Canola Eat Well builds awareness, understanding, and demand for canola in urban audiences throughout Manitoba and across Canada. Our team collaborates with a network of influential leaders, empowering them to share their knowledge and experiences about canola with their own unique and dedicated audiences. This network of leaders includes chefs, cookbook authors, professional home economists, registered dieticians, and more. The Canola Eat Well team also engages people through invaluable programs like The Great Tastes of Manitoba, Manitoba's most-watched cooking show, and the province's longest-running locally-produced television series, reaching more Manitobans each week than anything on the Food Network. We also create resources like the Veggie Cookbook, included in the Farm-to-School fundraiser, distributed alongside fresh vegetables to 55,000 people across Manitoba. Sharing farmers' stories and building connections with consumers protects and grows canola's strong market share in Canada. Providing answers to public questions builds trust and support for modern farming. It all ensures our reputation at home is as strong as our reputation abroad, helping Manitoba farmers continue to maximize their net returns from canola. Join the conversation and share your stories with us at canolaeatwell.com. Manitoba Canola Growers carefully considers what information you need to know as a farmer, offering a variety of communications tools as a trusted source of current, practical, and relevant information. CanolaGrowers.com is a hub of information covering topics including canola production, research, market development, advocacy, leadership, event promotion, and more. Publications like our Canola Crush newsletter provide timely Manitoba-specific information to members. The Quarterly Canola Digest Magazine plus the Science Edition brings broader perspective on key canola issues. Our active presence on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube round out an interactive communications network, allowing farmers to engage and contribute to a larger canola discussion. Whether it's the latest research and agronomy updates, advocacy activities, market development and expansion, or resources and events that offer the chance to connect, learn, lead, and grow, this is all available through Manitoba Canola Growers. Engage with us through our interactive communication networks at Canola Growers. Empowering farmers to learn, lead, and grow on their farms and beyond is truly why we're here. We love to collaborate through events like the Crop Connect Conference that bring farmers together to network and hear from top experts on a variety of different topics, including canola in a whole-farm perspective. As with many organizations, COVID-19 required us to cancel many of our in-person events this past year, including Crops-a-Palooza and the Cedar and Sprayer Clinic. But agriculture doesn't stop for a pandemic, and neither did we. We innovated, shifted to virtual learning, and expanded our collaborations to support others' online events as well as hosting some of our own. We continue to bring information to farmers while respecting growing demands on their virtual time. We look forward to the day that we can safely host the interactive and hands-on learning events that we have come to be known for. Stay up to date on canola extension and engagement opportunities under the Production and Events tab on our website.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rick White, President and CEO of the Canadian Canola Growers Association. Thank you so much for giving me the time and opportunity to talk to you about the activities of CCJ over this past year that we've been doing on your behalf. I'd like to start with the Advanced Payments Program. We've been lobbying for years to get the limits of that program increased from $400,000 maximum to $1 million, and we were successful in convincing the government to do that. As such, our 2019 program that we administer on behalf of the federal government was substantially increased. We now, in that program year, did 11,000 advances to farmers, and those advances were worth just over $2 billion. On the national policy front and being your national voice through our Policy Development and Government Relations Office in Ottawa, our priorities have been predominantly for 2019, trade, business risk management, biofuels, and rail transportation. On trade, we're continuing to be active on trying to figure out with the federal government what to do with China and get canola back to normal. We're on the Canola Working Group with the Canola Council of Canada, direct with the federal government. Those discussions are ongoing, still no resolve. We also worked significantly on the Canada-US Mexico Trade Agreement, KUSMA. We appeared before a committee, and we supported ratification of that agreement. On business risk management, egg stability continues to be a problem. We continue to lobby for improvements to that program. If they're going to have a program, it should work for farmers, and we're pushing for the margin trigger to be increased to 85% and removal of the reference margin limit. That would help trigger more money when farmers need a boost. And of course, we're not hanging all our, putting all our eggs in, in that egg stability basket. We continue at CCJ to do research, trying to figure out and provide advice to the government of what a program design, what program design might work better for grains and oil seeds producers in Canada. So we are actively providing suggestions to them. Biofuels, our intent there continues and always has been, been working on this file for years. The intent is to increase the domestic demand for canola here in Canada. We are trying to get the mandates for the inclusion of canola-based biodiesel into the diesel fuel pool, and we're working actively with the government on how to do that. Rail transportation, always a major policy file here at CCGA. We continue to be active. We're part of the Crop Logistics Working Group, which is an industry group working closely with government, and we are focusing our efforts there on. and we are focusing our efforts there on data performance measurement and infrastructure and resiliency as well. So to close, close up on this, we are going to continue working on China. As long as it's a problem, we will continue working on it and pressing this issue to the top of the agenda with the federal government. Environment and sustainability is an area of significant concern and work right now. We've got the Clean Fuel Standard that is at the federal level being developed. There is an opportunity for canola biofuel in that. We have been active and have been advising the government and have actually influenced the government on a number of fronts to make it more friendly for farmers. Responsible grain, that is a bit of a hot button right now. We know that. We don't have a position on it. We want farmers to be able to have their say. There is a consultation right now. It's a real consultation. We need to hear from you, your thoughts on responsible grain. We have not made any decisions or positioned it at all, but we're waiting to hear from farmers so that will develop our position, position here on that with CCJ. And finally, last but not least, carbon tax. A lot of airtime on that. We all know what it's about. We all know it's a threat to agriculture. We are working out a plan, trying to figure out a way to soften the blow of the government's intent to implement carbon taxes in this country over the long term. We are going to be in the face of government, behind the scenes and even in front of the scene, but mostly behind the scenes, to be in the room talking sense to them about the impact, the negative impact this could have on farmers. With that, I'll turn it back to your meeting. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Jim Everson, President of the Canola Council of Canada, and I want to thank you for having me as part of your virtual AGM today. We work closely with the provincial grower groups. In fact, the Manitoba Canola Growers Association and the Canola Council share offices in Winnipeg, and we find many opportunities to be efficient and to collaborate. Growers in Manitoba make a significant contribution to the Canola Council through their check-off dollars that are provided to the Manitoba Canola Growers Association, and we are committed to ensuring this investment is managed efficiently and that it delivers on priority areas for our grower members. An important way of doing this is to be clear on our mandate and that of our partners. So I wanted to spend a few minutes today to review our role and update you on some of the progress we've made over the past year. The Canola Council has a clear mandate, working together with all parts of the value chain to advance the growth and profitability of the canola industry. The Canola Council focuses on three areas of strategic priority: ensuring there is a growing, sustainable, and reliable supply of canola for export markets to support our producers and for our processors. Differentiated value means ensuring that we're demonstrating the unique, high-quality characteristics of seed, oil, and meal to global and domestic customers, and creating a stable and open trade environment. In the past few years, many of our concerns have been related to that third priority, to trade, and one of the most difficult continues to be the ongoing disruption of seed trade with China. We continue to urge the Canadian government to take all necessary actions to restore rules-based, predictable trade with China, and to ensure all Canadian exporters are treated equally by the Chinese administration. We're also taking action to diversify our markets so we can be less reliant on a few big customers like China. One of the new opportunities we're pursuing right here in Canada is a growing market for renewable fuels. Canola is one of the best feedstocks available for biodiesel production, and with a new national Clean Fuel Standard coming, it's an important chance to build a larger domestic market for canola. Alongside partners like the Canadian Canola Growers Association, we've been intensively lobbying the federal government to make sure that the Clean Fuel Standard delivers for canola. If Ottawa gets this regulation right, we could see a domestic market of more than 2.5 million tons of canola seed, which is roughly the size of our exports, the size of our exports to Japan, and it would be a stable market, removed from the shifting forces of world trade. When it comes to canola production here in Canada, we know we'll need to increase our canola yields if we want to fully capitalize on the growing demand and to increase profitability on your farm. To get there, we need to increase the productivity of every acre. There are many underutilized opportunities in this area. The Canola Council develops evidence-based advice on agronomic practices to help achieve these targets, and we work closely with your provincial commission to communicate this information to growers in the most useful and accessible way. We also partner with your provincial canola commission on research to support growers. The council's role is to coordinate and administer research programs, leveraging government contributions to make grower dollars go further. We work closely with growers, researchers, and other stakeholders to identify the type of research most needed, ensure it is credible, evidence-based, and unbiased, and transform findings into best management practices that can be put into action on your farm. The council creates value for canola growers also through market development, promoting the unique qualities of canola to existing and potential customers. In 2020, we adjusted our programming to reach out to global markets through virtual platforms. We held seminars with the two largest feed companies in China, met with Japanese customer associations on two occasions, held seminars with dairy producers and feed compounders in the United States, and in early 2021, will host a virtual trade mission with South Korean customers. Our canola promotion work focuses on markets with realistic growth opportunity and is aligned with our market access strategies. Growers from each of the three Prairie Canola Commissions and the Canadian Canola Growers Association sit on the Canola Council Board. Along with representatives from the grain companies and seed developers, they oversee the Canola Council's programs, supporting growers to maximize profitability and reduce production risk by providing growing supply of canola for global markets, maintaining open access to markets, and creating differentiated value of canola through international promotion and education. The Canola Council is committed to meeting the needs of canola growers through all of these activities. So thank you for supporting the Canola Council of Canada, and thank you for your time today.
Great. Thanks so much, everyone. I hope you enjoyed those videos to update you on the activities of Manitoba Canola Growers, as well as the Canadian Canola Growers Association and the Canola Council of Canada. This is an opportunity for you to ask questions related to our annual reports that you've just seen. So while we're waiting for questions, members, I'll just remind you, the Ask a Question feature is at the top of your screen. I just want to take a moment, though, to address, I understand there's been a few technical challenges with folks. My apologies for that. It sounds like a few folks have been able to log back in as they raised their questions of being able to get back in. So just reminders that if your video freezes, it's likely something related to your internet or your browser, so please try refreshing or logging back in. And reminder that when you come back in, it is possible that you're, you may be muted. The system may mute you when you come back in, so if you find you have no sound, just have a look for that volume button below the video feed. So while we're waiting for questions from our members, I do see one up here, but I'll just ask a couple of questions that had come up earlier. I'll maybe start with you, Jim. Could you maybe update us on the latest related to trade with China?
Oh, well, thank you, Delaney. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yeah, thank you so much for joining us.
Super. Yeah, well, we certainly continue to have Market Access Challenge with China. Two of our major exporters still are not able to trade canola seed to China. It's a major issue for us. It's something that the Canola Council, along with the Canadian Canola Growers Association and others, have been working very hard on, as we've alluded to in the videos up to now. So, you know, the two companies have also been working really hard at it with the value chain and the government of Canada. I think everybody's aware that it's a complex issue. It's not, it's impacted by bigger issues around the relationship between Canada and China and the relationship between the United States and China. And so we continue to work at it. Our role is to, what we've asked the government of Canada to work with us on is to ensure that we have a return to open, predictable trade and that we have equity between the exporters and Canada. And I just wanted to mention too, Delaney, while we're on it, is that we're also, you know, as mentioned in the video, working really hard at the diversification side of things. So we definitely want to have China back and all of our exporters able to access it. But, you know, we had a very successful mission with South Korea that Nicolau Dao, one of your directors, was very much involved in. We really appreciated the help there. We're working on the biofuels issue, as we've pointed out, and recently have had sessions with Japanese, Pakistan, and Vietnam, you know, so working very hard at the diversification side. So yes, we need to get China back, but we also need to continue our efforts on market development to, to give, to increase value to producers and options for our industry.
That's great. Thanks so much, Jim. Excellent, thank you. We had lost Clayton there, so we'll, we have him back. Excellent, thanks, Clayton. Great, so just, I would love to carry on here while we're waiting for questions from our members, and we do have one, and I'll just give it another moment here to see if anyone else has questions, and then we'll start addressing them. But Rick, if I could ask you, are you expecting any changes to the cash advance program in 2021?
Okay, I'll do a quick sound check too. Delaney, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can. Thanks so much for being here.
All right. Yeah, the Cash Advance Program for 2021, there really are no planned changes. The government made the big change over a year ago now by increasing the limit to $1 million per advance per farmer, and we don't see any additional changes. But I can share that we at CCJ are further enhancing our online application process to eliminate the need for farmers to sign the electronic application by hand and then send it back to us and their seed acre reports. We want to do electronic signatures on those documents to streamline it for you. So that is at our end in our system and is under testing in our development of our platform currently. Hopefully, it'll be ready and available here in a few weeks. And just ongoing, I guess, work with Ag Canada, trying to simplify the issuance rules for existing APP customers. Those farmers who are already getting advances are known to us, have a good track record. We think we should be able to lighten the load in terms of reviewing the eligibility of those individuals to really streamline the process. We're working with Ag Canada. It is their program. It is their rules, but we are trying to work with them to, to, to improve that. Back to you, Delaney.
Great. Thanks so much, Rick. Excellent. So just having a look for questions here, we do have one. Wilfred Carter is asking, "CCGA, so Rick, what is your net income? And for 2020, what is the value of your total assets?"
Good question. Those are not numbers we normally disclose, but I mean, there's nothing wrong with, you know, for the membership here, we are owned by farmers. Excuse me, so I don't, I don't mind sharing some, some top-line numbers. CCJ's total net worth, the entire organization right now, the net worth, the total equity is about, is right around the $50 million mark right now. Now, keep in mind, our program that we managed in 2019 was a $2 billion program. So our net worth is, I wouldn't say thin, but it's, it's more, it's adequate for the size of business that we're doing. And annual revenues run around the $36 million mark. And so it's a big cash flow business, and all of our earnings, our, that, 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 our profits are generated by interest spreads between the cheap rate we get from the banks and a very modest rate that we issue to farmers. So that's where our profit comes in. Our administration fee is zero. Our interest rate on the interest-bearing portion of the advance is prime minus 0.75%, and we can still make a very small margin on that. So a small margin on a lot of money, that's where the money comes from. And I think it's a good model for everybody, and it funds CCJ. So thanks for the question, Will.
Great. Thanks, Rick. Another question for you from Ian Robson. He says, "Two companies have issues working in China." Oh, sorry, that would be for you, Jim. "Two companies have issues working in China. What did those companies do?" China's buying lots of canola. They may have gotten some price deals from playing the system. That is what buyers do. What is Canola Council to do?
So, you know, China had made a complaint that there was contamination in some seed deliveries that led to these permits being removed. We have contested that. The companies have contested that, and the government of Canada has contested that. And in working with China, have made efforts to determine, you know, what China's testing procedures have been and so on. So that discussion continues. But as I pointed out, and it's a really good question, Ian, you know, what I pointed out earlier is that this is really tied up in a larger set of political issues between Canada and China, and it's something that I think is only going to be resolved as we work through, as the government of Canada works through those issues with China and other partners.
Great. Thanks so much, Jim. I think that's it for questions. I don't have anything else coming up online. So last call, just to make sure whether anyone else had anything else to ask. But I think we're good to go. So Clayton, you're, you're here. Here, we've got you back. Everything's good there.
Okay, Will. Thank you, Delaney. Thank you, Rick and Jim, for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks so much for being here.
Next on the agenda, we'll move it, sorry, yeah, go ahead, Delaney.
Oh, sorry. I'm not sure if everyone can hear me here. One thing that we didn't address that, lost you at the beginning there, so we didn't get a chance to share, the Code of Practice. We, we know that this is on the minds of our members, and I wonder if we might just take a moment to, to make some comments about the Code of Practice.
For sure. Absolutely, Delaney. We have talked about it a lot lately. Yeah, I guess, over the last couple of months, MCGA directors joined the many farmers being consulted on the Responsible Grains Code of Practice, developed by the Canadian Roundtable for Sustainable Crops, or SRSC. Sector took a deep dive into this document and the extremely important farmers were human folly, but had to discuss what was posed. We will sector review last week, and see if it is formal. You hear me now? Yeah? Sure?
Yeah. No, that's fine. That's hopefully that, that helps.
When I'm back.
Yeah. I think we've got you there. Yeah, you were just saying about a deep dive into the document, Clayton.
Sure. Okay, you guys can hear me. We wrapped up the Canola Sector Review last week. Formal responses, the book hour members has recognized that this document, as written, is weak and support. We know that by its very definition, farming is sustainable. We take care of our resources, continuously improving how we farm so we can do better next year and for generations to come. As an industry, we all need to do a better job of telling that story, and the MCGA board sees a growing urgency to show the many ways we are dedicated to producing safe, healthy, and affordable food. We don't think that this Code of Practice accomplished that goal. Our formal response will reflect your concerns and questions as well as our own. Going forward, MCGA will continue to be at the table, reviewing the documents, taking a position that represents our membership, and sharing your voice on these important issues and consultations.
That's great. Thanks so much, Clayton.
Thanks.
Yeah.
This technology is kind of making it difficult here. I don't know if, if I'm actually just speaking into a mirror or into a screen, or if I'm being heard.
Oh, dear. I can hear you. It was a little bit choppy.
Okay.
Okay. It was a little bit choppy, but I think it, I think it worked out here. So, so that's great. Yeah, thanks. It just wanted a chance to, to share that with the membership. You know, at any time during this meeting, you're welcome to ask questions. And not only during this meeting, our annual meeting is not the only time that we want to hear from you. So if you have questions or concerns as members and want to, want to share that with us, if you have an ask of us, something you'd like to see, it does not just have to be in the form of a resolution, just call us. Call me. My email address is on the website. You know, Clayton is our president, is on the website, any of our directors, and we'd love to hear from you and, and hear what you'd like to see from us that would help support you and bring you value. So, so with that, I don't see any other questions, but, you know, certainly welcome at any time, and I'll continue to monitor that. But I think at this point, we could probably move forward to the, to the next item on the agenda.
Perfect. Thanks, Delaney. Next on the agenda, we'll move into final. Next on the agenda, we'll move into financials. To do that, I will now turn the meeting over to our treasurer, Curtis McCray.
Hey, thanks, Clayton. So today, I'm happy to share with you the 2019-2020 financial, audited financials. If you were unable to view them ahead of the meeting, we have them in the meeting packages. Probably on my phone, it shows up down below, but I'm being told it's to the left of your screen as well. So try to figure it out. And as we run through the financial statements, please feel free to ask a question in the Ask a Question box. I think there's also a way to tag it as a financial question. And then at the end of the report, we'll try to answer as many questions as we can. So I'd like to introduce our accountant, Alex George, who will walk us through the audited financials. So here you go, Alex.
Hello. This is the annual review for the 2020 audited financial statements of the Manitoba Canola Growers Association. Starting with page one, the independent auditor's report, we're providing an unqualified opinion as the financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the organization. Continuing to the statement of financial position on page three, the most notable items are: the bank increased by $823,000. This is mainly due to increased payables of $328,000 and net income of $425,000. Next, the investments have a combined fair market value of $5.59 million. New for 2020 is the revenue reserve of $508,000. This was a board decision to internally restrict funds for future larger projects and expenditures. Details can be found on note six. Prepays have dropped back to $179,000. $167,000 is PSI lab expenditures which will be incurred in the next fiscal year. Finally, capital basics increased. Total new office furniture was around $2,500, and total new computer equipment was around $8,000. Moving to liabilities on page four, the most notable items are: accounts payable increased by $328,000 to a total of $629,000. This balance includes trades payable of $455,000, wages payable of $20,000, and check-off refunds of $153,000. Next, deferred check-off revenues have stayed fairly consistent. These are the net check-off levies received in the current fiscal year, which will be expensed next fiscal year. Lastly, in net assets, new revenue reserves were set up to set aside surplus funds for future projects. Flipping to page six, Statement of Operations, net check-off revenues and investment income have stayed consistent with prior years. The most notable item is the PSI lab revenue. This was received from the Canadian Ag Partnership of $83,000. Expenses were down overall, as detailed in note 11. They are under budget by $482,000. The net excess of revenues over expenses for the year was $424,763. Continuing to page seven, the schedule of expenses, or governance, was under budget by roughly $68,000. This was due to meetings and travel being canceled due to COVID, as well as no election expenses were incurred. Professional fees were around $42,000. This consists mainly of HR services of $15,000, lawyer fees of $5,000, and auditing fees of around $11,000. In administration, office personnel expenses consist of all wages and benefits. This was an increase of 14% from prior year, but is reasonable given the cola, the raises, and a new staff hire. Market development was on budget and was consistent with prior years. Total advocacy expenditures was $143,000 and below budget by $114,000. The drop in extension meetings was due to COVID forcing canceled meetings and travel. The drop in youth programming was reduced expenditures in the Canola Learning Center. Total communication expenditures was $53,000, which was below budget by $83,000. This drop was expected as COVID resulted in reduced meeting costs and planned promotional purchases. Total grower engagement expenditures were $124,000, which was below budget by $99,000. Again, this drop was expected due to COVID, as grow engagement includes many trade show expenditures. Total research expenditures was $770,000, which was below budget by $119,000. This drop compared to budget was due to some projects being canceled, along with some cost savings realized in cart projects and in research reporting. Finally, in the notes to the financial statements, flipping to page 13, note six details the new revenue reserves set up in 2020. Note seven details the restrictions to these reserves. And note nine details the current deferred check-off revenues. Check-off refunds for the current year was 9.28% of sales. This is consistent with prior years, as 2019 was 8.46% and 2018 was 9.52%. Finally, on page 14, note 10 details the future commitments of the organization. Two new items to note: a new rental agreement was signed, extending it until August of 2024, and the 2021 estimated core funding is $441,000. That concludes our annual review of the financial statements. Thank you and stay safe.
Hey, thanks, Alex. So now we have a little bit of time to answer any questions that may have developed during the presentation. So, Delaney, do you see any questions in front of you?
Yeah, I'm just having a look. I haven't seen anything. Yeah, I haven't seen anything.
If you don't mind taking a little bit of time.
Perfect. Yeah, give it a moment here, and we'll see if anyone wants to pose any questions.
Yeah, I know my screen froze up on me, so I, my third screen that I'm watching is a little bit behind. We'll get there.
Yeah. Okay, so I do have, do have a question here or a comment. I'm not entirely sure it's related to the financials, but it's related to the code of practice. So I'll maybe raise it now anyways, and I'll likely seek to address this. Unless, Alex, you want to jump in with the answer. That's great. But we'll, we'll address this while we're waiting to see if there's any other questions related to the financials. So the question is from Ian Robson. "There might be a proposed code, RE Green, but farmers have to meet CGC standards which require best practice as it is right now. Vital to keep the CGC versus any switch to a voluntary code. Good to be concerned about the code. In beef, there's not much value from that code, and yet many hands touch the product between field and fork. Farmers are concerned about our work. Would be nice to get some pay to do rather, to do so, rather than being squeezed by costs which rise with the price of green, see fertilizer, which is just going up. For excuses, X, Y, Z, pick one. We'll explain it." So, so yeah, so I guess more of a comment, but appreciate that, Ian, that, you know, certainly one of the things that we've acknowledged as we were reviewing this code that was put forward or proposed by the Canadian Roundtable for Sustainable Crops. A good portion of the code referenced law and various standards that we already adhere to. So that was something that we brought forward as comments related to that, that there is a significant amount of law and expectations governing farmers. And that, that's something that needs to be acknowledged in whatever action may or may not be taken related to this. The story about farmers and their various ways that they are sustainable and committed to excellence is important to be told. So greatly appreciate that comment. So I, at that point, I don't see any questions that have come in here related to financials. So I think everyone has hopefully had a chance to ask their question if they had one. But I think we're, we're good to go.
Well, we do have a phone number, so we'll always be phoned as well later.
Yes, indeed. I just got a thanks back, so I thought it was another question. Oh, and there is one more here. Oh, here we go. So, Janice Johansson, sorry, of Willwind Farms, asked, "The administration line increased year over last and exceeded budgeted value. What was the reason for the increase of $85,000? What is the budget for the 2021 administration line item, and is it expected to increase?" See if I can all kind of flip to that line and get our answer here.
I can speak to that a bit there.
Great, thanks, Alex.
That did increase. Along with wage increases, there's the cost of living allowance, which is included into that. As well, there was a new hire, Brenda Dick. So that did increase it higher than expected with the new hire there. As well, you would notice Oxana, part of the staff, took on additional responsibilities. Is, so there is additional wage costs included in that with the additional responsibilities.
Great, thanks, Alex. I would note, there would have been an impact there from, we had some turnover with a staff member as well. So that would have impacted from the final wages from that individual. So regarding budget, that is listed on page 15. Oh, sorry, that was the 2020 budget at $825,000. I would have to get back to you, Janice, on the this year's budget. I don't have that right in front of me here, so I can get back to you on that. But the budget, that's a line that we always look to keep as tight as we can. But recognizing that cost of living allowance and increases related to rent, various other expenditures, you know, maybe capital purchases to replace outdated equipment, those kind of things, are items that we always need to account for each year. So that's where I would answer to that point. Great. Oh, and we got a perfect, thanks, excellent. We do have another question. Roberta Galbraith asks, "What ongoing strategy does MCGA have to try and speak to the refund rate on check-offs?" So I'll maybe take a kick at that one if, if I can. So, related to the refund rates on check-offs, the refund rates are truly a mix of things. It's an indication of, you know, the situation that farmers face. There are always, you know, important and valid reasons that farmers choose to refund their dollars. However, it's also a reflection of us as an organization and the value that we bring to our membership. And we take that very seriously, that we as an organization can demonstrate our value in all the ways that we deliver programming. So regarding, you know, members' decision to, to keep their dollars with us, that is instilled in all of our programming. And addressing the, our membership, those farmers who are with us, as well as those individuals who are considering a refund, you know, if the reason related to that refund is about what we've done as an organization, you know, that's, that's a message to us to ensure that we are delivering the best that we can in terms of meeting and exceeding our farmers' expectations. So really, that's making sure that we're delivering value and doing what our farmers need of us is inherent in everything we do. And so, you know, I can, I can essentially say everything we do is tied back to ensuring that the return on investment for farmers is maximized. Great. So I don't think we have anything else here for questions. I don't see anything else popping up, so I think we can carry on.
Perfect. Perfect. We'll go to my favorite part of the show, where I will make the motion to accept the financial report for the 2019-2020 year as presented, which has already been seconded by Bill Nicholson. So we'll take a little pause here to check with Delaney to see if there's any comments or questions before we proceed to voting on my motion.
Great. Thanks. I do see a question. I don't know that it's quite related to financials, but as we're pausing for a moment to see if there are any other questions, I can address that. So Dean Harder has shared that fertilizer prices are jumping at very high rates. We don't think it's simply due to cost of production. Would the Manitoba Canola Growers consider working with other farm groups to do an inquiry into this and even make it an election issue? Thanks for raising that, Dean. I think that's something we can take, take back and look into. I know we have certainly had discussions around the board table that fertilizer prices, you know, as much as the crop prices are strong, that margin is impacted when the cost of inputs continue to rise. So I'm going to take this back and discuss this with our board and look to do what we can in this. So thanks so much for raising that. Great. So I don't see any other questions, Curtis. I think that covers us.
All right. Without any further discussion, we will now call for the vote on the motion to approve the 2019 financial report. Now, while everybody's voting, I would like to take a minute to thank all of our guests that have joined us and working with us with the cold weather that's probably not helping our line-of-sight internet processes. Also need to thank Alex for his time here. And voting in progress. So as we work through the votes, I'll just keep talking here and Delaney busy. And it's working on my phone, so we're good there.
Excellent. Okay, that's good. We're up to 25 of 27. I think we're looking good here. We're, we've got 25 in favor, none opposed, and none abstained. So I think we can likely move forward here. 26 in, it's still all in favor.
Perfect. So we'll call that motion passed. And so now I need a little bit of help from the audience on this next one, because I'm looking for a motion to approve, to appoint DF George as the auditor for MCGA for the fiscal period ending July 31st, 2021.
Excellent. Oh, we got quick fingers on this one. Dawn Thiessen has moved and Nicola Dow has seconded. So we are good to move ahead with, with the vote on this motion, unless there's any discussion, and I can check the questions.
Give a little delay for some discussion, and then we'll move to the vote.
Perfect. Just pause, have a look.
Maybe this is a good time to raise. My eyes flipping all over the place.
Going back and forth?
Yeah, we're doing, yeah. All of them are connected now, so we're even doing better. So no questions at your end, Delaney?
I'm not seeing anything coming up here, Curtis. Thanks.
Okay, since we have a mover and a seconder, I think it's now time to call for the vote on the motion to appoint DF George to audit our MCGA records for July, up to the period ending July 31st, 2021.
Great. Oh, we're moving quickly here. We're up to 12, 13. You have 29 voters online at this moment.
Perfect, we'll start.
19.
We'll get Clayton ready again. Hopefully his internet is still functioning.
Good. Yes, that would be good. Okay, we're getting close here. All right, so we've got 27 out of 29, 27, oh, 28 are in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained.
I think on the 29th, I didn't vote because it's the third screen.
Got a vote. Exercise your right. Excellent. I think we're good to go here, Curtis.
And with that, I'll hand that back over to you and Clayton, who are doing an excellent job this morning. Thank you much.
Thank you so much, Curtis. Great job. Oh. I think you're muted. We can't hear you. Uh-oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, brutal. Computers, I, I don't know how hard to punch them.
Computer's hard.
Excellent. Yeah. Next up on the agenda, we'll move into the proposed bylaw amendments. If you haven't already reviewed the document, you can find it on the link on the side of your screen. The COVID-19 pandemic changed how many organizations do business, including MCGA. We are fortunate to have already adopted many of the virtual technologies that we're seeing more often now. So the transition to working virtually was pretty seamless. Hosting this virtual AGM is a first for all of our organizations, and the MCGA Board is seeking to modernize the bylaws to clearly allow for business to be conducted virtually, as well as in person. They also noted a few minor clarifications or updates to the wording that have been included. This is the bulk of the changes included in Bylaw Number 1, 2020. The Board also discussed the ongoing challenge of attracting new directors to the Board. The past two elections have been decided by acclamation, and the Board is seeking to understand how we could grow interest in the director role. One flag is the timing of nominations, which are due between October are due between October 15th and the 31st in an election year, right in the middle of fall work or harvest delayed crops from any of us. The board is proposing to revise the election dates to allow nominations between November 15th and 30th rather than October, hoping that better timing would allow for members to consider standing for election. I will walk through an overview of the proposed changes as they would appear in the document. Reminder, if you have any questions or comments, please click the Ask a Question button, the top right of your screen. The summary of changes to the bylaws are outlined in items 1 to 26 in bylaw number 12020. You'll see the proposed amendments up on the screen. Item 1 is a clarification of the purpose, purpose of the Funding Act. Items 2 through 7 allow for business to be conducted virtually, including actions such as cancellation or suspension of membership meetings. Annual meetings of members and special meetings updates are noted for the place of meetings and notice of business to be conducted electronically. Item 8, item 8 clarifies deadlines for pulling the list of members entitled to vote. Items 9 and 10 allow for quorum and the right to vote to be determined virtually. Item 11 clarified that voting happens on any resolution put to a vote and not any question raised. Items 12 to 14 are new clauses that allow for alternate voting, hybrid, or other means of meeting and holding an electronic meeting. Items 15 and 16 are clarifications that the number of directors on the board is eight, subject to any vacancies, and that the term is four years unless a director vacates sooner. Item 17 changes the nomination deadlines to November 15th to the 30th from October 15th to the 31st, allow a more convenient time for members to see nomination signatures. Item 18 allows for nomination withdrawal electronically as well as by mail. For item 19, we need to flag an error that was made on the first draft. The first draft noted the adjustment of the ballot mail out deadline to January 14th from December 10th, which is an accident, accidental duplication of the ballot dates. Is proposed at the ballot mail out deadline, be adjusted to November, to December 14th from November 22nd. We'll need to pass a side amendment to capture this edit as we did not catch the error before the bylaws were posted to our website. Our apologies. Let's deal with this amendment now while it's fresh in everyone's minds. I'm looking for a mover and seconder for a motion to amend the amendment, to amend the amendment in item 19 of bylaw number 12020. So looking for a mover. Seconder for a motion to amend the amendment in bylaw.
Perfect. Great. Your, your sound's getting a little bit choppy there, Clayton. Hopefully, we'll be able to carry on. We do have a mover. Gunter Yokum has moved and Nicola Dow has seconded. So I can just check here if there's any questions related to this. Yeah. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say there's, I see a couple of tech concerns as well as a question related to the code of practice we can address shortly. So carry on.
Okay, so there's no, so we have a mover, we have a seconder. Is any discussion related to amending the amendments?
Just give it a moment to see if there's any comment. Yeah, again, there's, there's trouble with sound for some folks. The sound is not muted for, for one of our members, but it's, yeah, still not coming through. So I don't know.
Maybe they need to refresh their page or something. I know yesterday I had some problems and was constantly having to, to try and troubleshoot my own issues there. It wasn't, I'm not good at them anyway.
Yeah, so, you know, it looks like logging in and out a couple of times was tried, but yeah, I'm not sure, not sure what else. Ron, in the background here, I don't know if you have any other suggestions related to troubles with sound where it's not muted and tried logging in, logging out. I guess another browser might be another option. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. So there's two places where it could be muted. One is on your computer for the sound, but the system itself has a little sound button in the bottom corner of the video feed. So you might need to check there to see if it's muted there. So hopefully that, that helps. Clayton, I'm not seeing any questions related to this amendment to, like correction to item 19 here.
Okay, well, let's, let's call for the vote then.
Great. So open that up. Voting's underway here. About halfway there.
It feels like my computer's having more errors than, or slow ups than it has in previous days. I don't know why, considering how great it is out and everything.
This is our, the will of the internet gods, I guess. So, okay, we're most of the way there. We have 22 in favor so far, one abstaining out of 25 voters. So 24 processed. Yeah, we're looking, okay, so I think everyone's in here out of 25. We now have 25 ballots processed, 24 in favor, and one abstaining.
Okay. Thanks, Delaney. That's carried. Back to the proposed bylaw amendments then. If item 20, item 20 updates the ballot receipt deadline to January 15th from December 10th. Items 21 and 22 allow for virtual meetings related to the election as well as board or committee meetings. Item 23 clarifies the details of per diem reporting we made available on request at the AGM. Item 24 clarifies that conflict of interest guidelines shall be adhered to by each director. Item 25 allows for other means of providing notice electronically. Item 26 clarifies that the bylaw is subject to approval of the association and comes into effect upon approval. These are the proposed amendments to the bylaws, including modernization to allow for virtual meetings to adjust election dates to later in the fall and a few housekeeping items. I'll call for a motion to approve the bylaw amendments as amended in item 19 of bylaw number 12020. So we're going to look for a mover and a seconder.
Great, thanks, Clayton. We've got Roberta Galbraith has moved and Nicola Dow has seconded.
Perfect. Now that we have a mover and seconder, we'll give Delaney time to look for questions or comments. While she's doing that, I would like to thank Bailey Chiswick and Robert Fleischer are lawyers from MLT Akins, who helped us walk through the details of the amendments. Delaney, are you seeing any comments or questions?
I'm not seeing anything yet here related to the bylaw amendments. So, well, maybe just give it a moment. I wonder if I might take a moment to address this code of practice question while we're waiting, because I do want to make sure that people have a chance to type in questions related to the bylaws. Is that fair? Okay, so Brendan Phillips from Grand Bend Farms had asked a question related to the code of practice. So while many of us farmers have serious concerns with the current code of practice as drafted, do not feel producer groups issuing statements before consultation for individual producers closed might discourage some individuals from engaging in the process on their own. I feel feedback from farmers is far more important in this process than any other feedback, and my concern in issuing statements against the code of practice before consultations closed is that it inadvertently discourages participation by those who need to engage most in these consultations. What will MCGA do to help drive more producer engagement in this process? Us farmers can be known to shy away from these consultations. Thank you so much for that question, Brendan. Clayton, I don't know if you want to respond to that, if you want me to kind of take a first pass.
If you want to take a first pass.
Yeah, and then, you know, if you have anything to add, please do. It's a great point, Brendan, and it's, it's a challenging situation to be in. There was a significant, you know, a significant amount of feedback coming back from some of our members, those who were engaged early, raising concern and really demanding that to know where we stand on this code. So our board, recognizing that consultation is extremely important, and if I could just, you know, sidebar here to say, the canola family, we call ourselves, of the provincial organizations and the national organizations you heard from earlier, all recognize that consultation by farmers on this code was going to be critical. And we actually took a step beyond to, to ensure that there was an opportunity to do a deep dive into the consultation. You know, a cursory, surface level consultation was not going to cut it. So, you know, we took it upon ourselves to create, you know, our own kind of focus group of about 50 farmers from across the prairies to dive into this. And our communications have been heavily focused on encouraging farmers to get involved. So while the board did come forward with, you know, what I would call an interim statement, saying that they object to the code as it's written, and that, but recognizing that action needs to be taken to some degree to deal with the risk that farmers are facing more and more with the pressure from consumers in particular to have their food sourced from a sustainable source, right? That it's the, the claim to be able to say as a company providing that food that it was sustainably sourced. There's a risk to farmers there that we recognize. So I can say with confidence that it was certainly not the intention of the organization to prevent farmers from getting involved. We continue to put the message forward that farmers need to be involved. And our response has yet to be drafted in full while, while we've, you know, made these interim comments. We have yet to put our position forward in exactly what that looks like. So strongly encourage farmers to continue to share with us what their reaction is, what their comments are, you know, whether they object, whether they agree, whether they, you know, somewhat agree and want to see some changes, whatever that looks like. All of that is what we're listening for right now. And maybe this is a good time for me to share that on our website, we've introduced a member feedback form under our advocacy tab, that this is a great opportunity to use that form to reach out to us and let us know where you stand on this, how you'd like to see it going forward, and what you'd like us to say on your behalf when we formally respond to this issue. So Clayton, I don't know if you had anything to add there?
No, I think Delaney did an excellent job answering it. And no, the person who wrote that raises a good point. Thanks for that. Farmers being able to weigh in on a topic like this is, is critical. You know, there's 50,000 farmers in Western Canada. Everybody there are. The more voices that weigh in, allow something like this to be tuned appropriately and correctly.
Great.
Is there any questions, Delaney, related to the, the motion?
Yes, I don't see any other questions. I think that covers what we had there. So we can likely move forward related to the bylaws.
Okay, so do we have a mover and seconder? We do?
No, we need to open it for, oh, no, we do have a mover and a seconder. Roberta and Nicola had moved and seconded. So I didn't see any questions. So I think we can open the, the vote, Mike, Clay.
Okay. While we're waiting for the votes to come in, I want to give a heads up to Ron Kron and Gunter Yokum. We will be calling on you in the next section of the meeting as we move into resolutions.
Great. Okay, quick fingers. Well done, everyone. We have 28 in favor, none opposed, and none abstaining. Oh, 29 in favor.
Perfect. Well, that's carried. Thank you, Delaney. Moving on to resolutions, we have one resolution to deal with that was submitted by the deadline of January 25th. We will give the mover, Ron Kron, two minutes to speak to the resolution, and the seconder, Gunter Yokum, one minute to speak. During this time, if you have any questions, please use the Ask a Question feature to send them to us. Our first resolution is now coming up on screen, and I would invite the mover, Ron Kron, to speak for two minutes. You'll be followed by the seconder, Gunter Yokum. So Ron, if you're there, please go ahead.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Quick sound check. Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you. Going back to university days in economics, I learned that markets function best when all information is known. Currently, we have a lack of transparency, even with futures markets in all the crops that we grow in Western Canada. Currently, we only see grain movement data, often that can be months after the sales are made. Back in July of 1972, Russia bought 10 million tons of wheat and corn, and no one realized how much they had bought till it was much too late. In response, the US put in a mandatory export sales reporting program in place. In summary, basically, total weekly sales for all exporters are reported every Thursday. In addition, any daily sales over 100,000 tons needs to be reported by the following date. In January 28th and 29th of this last year, the US set new daily records in the top 10 since 1977 of corn that was sold. It's very possible that in Canada, canola or spring wheat could have done the same, but we will never know as farmers because we don't have the same kind of reporting program. We've seen a $5 to $6 bushel increase in canola price in the last five to six months. I wonder sometimes how much canola farmers sold too soon based on non-transparency in the market due to lack of information signals. Roughly 3.2 million tons of canola in Manitoba was grown in 2020. Even if $2 a bushel, if farmers could have held off the sales and gained $2 a bushel on even a quarter of Manitoba's production, that would have been $70 million more in farmers' pockets due to more information. Having a mandatory export sales reporting will give farmers more market information. Better decisions are made by farmers when we have transparency in the markets. Passing this, passing this resolution gives strength in numbers and more widespread requests of government to make this mandatory reporting happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. Gunter, when you are ready, you have one minute to speak to the resolution, if you're there.
Yes, I'm here. If you can all hear me, I'll go ahead. Okay. Thanks, Ron, that motion, and thanks, Chair, for letting me speak here. I would just like to echo what Ron has said. And I only have to add, it only makes sense to have access to all export sales data. The Canadian Grain Commission has that information. Farmers fund the grain commission, and therefore it only makes sense for us farmers to have access to that data. It won't require any extra work or additional expense, and is another tool to help us farmers to make informed decisions towards marketing our grain. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Gunter. So we have obviously the mover, Ron, and the seconder, Gunter. Delaney, is there any questions or comments that have been typed in?
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Clayton. Thanks, Ron and Gunter, as well, for speaking to that. We do have a question from Bill Nicholson, asking, does the resolution envision the Canadian Grain Commission or some other entity collecting this information? And he noted that he is supportive of the intent. So I don't know if Ron or Gunter could speak to that?
Sure. I, I wanted to leave the resolution open to let the commodity groups decide or feel out government and the different organizations as to where they see the best fit would be. I think it is a natural fit for the Grain Commission to do that, and because that act is being opened up in the next year, I believe, or maybe as currently, I think there's a good opportunity and the timing is right to do that. Other groups, I know there were three groups in Saskatchewan that passed similar motions to, or similar resolutions, and the general consensus has been that Grain Commission is likely the best place to at least look into doing this first.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ron. Delaney, are you seeing any other questions in the Ask a Question feature?
Thanks, Clayton. I'm not seeing anything else coming up here. So I think, I think we're good.
Okay. I'd love to call for the question on the resolution that has been moved by Ron and seconded by Gunter. Is there a poll up?
Let me just double check here. Yes, perfect. So we have the poll up and open. Votes are coming in. Votes are coming in.
The motion is to approve the resolution that MCGA work with other commissions and organizations to advocate for the establishment of an export sales reporting program where all sales over the set minimum volume for canola seed, oil and meal and other crops must be reported daily to be compiled weekly and released in a timely fashion to add valuable knowledge to producers and marketing of their production. Moved by Ron Cron, seconded by Gunter Yokum. The votes are coming in, I presume?
Yeah, we're, I think we're all set here. We have 26 voters and 26, 27 ballots now in. 26 are in favor and one abstains.
Okay, thank you, that is carried. Delaney, throughout this time, has there been any resolutions that were brought forward from the floor?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any resolutions from the floor. I do see a comment, and I'll just maybe share the comment Ian Robson shared, "Good resolution, thanks for it." But note, during the Great Grain Robbery, Canada benefited because we had market power and took advantage of info that our selling agent was able to use. This is a function of a good information system, but also better judgment. Farmers are always at a limit on our knowledge. We need this, but also better than this. In favor and need CGC in this, but also to build back the power that farmers had lost when the Canadian Wheat Board was taken from us. So I, I think really a comment just to, to make the membership aware. Thanks for that, Ian. Great, so I don't see anything else, and I'm just gonna do a quick scroll through to make sure I didn't miss anything, but I don't believe I have seen any resolutions come in from the floor.
Okay, a reminder to our membership that any resolutions brought to the meeting from the floor must receive 90% approval to be dealt with at the meeting. Okay. Moving on to other business then, I would now like to call for a motion to accept MCGA act as the agent for producers in all matters relating to scientific research and experimental development in regards to canola as funded through MCGA. So looking for a mover and a seconder.
Got quick fingers again, Chuck Fossey has moved and Simon Ellis has seconded.
Okay.
So, I'll just have a look to see if there's any discussion. I don't see any, any questions or comments coming through here.
Okay. We'll call for the vote. While you're voting, I want to remind all members that SR and ED letters will be available on our website for you to share with your accountant. As funders of all MCGA research, you are eligible to get a tax credit. For the eligible research projects, we have applied for a credit of 14.6% and we'll let you know when we receive approval.
Great, thanks Clayton. We are on top of things here. We've got of our voters, we have 25 so far in favor, that's almost everyone has voted, none opposed and none abstaining. Oh, there we are, 26 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstain.
Perfect, thank you, Delaney, that is carried. Next, we'd like to call for a motion to ratify the actions of the association. We'll look for a mover and a seconder on this motion. All acts, contracts, bylaws, proceedings, appointments and payments enacted, made, done and taken by the directors and officers of the association, holding office from time to time since the last meeting of members as previously reported, or is set out or referred to in the annual report of the board or in the financial statements of the association, be and are hereby approved, ratified, sanctioned and confirmed. So we look for a mover and a seconder for that.
Thanks Clayton, we've got Robert Misko moved and Pam Bailey has seconded.
Perfect. I guess we'll take a, Delaney will be taking a minute here just to check and see if there are any questions or comments related to the motion?
Yeah, yeah, perfect. I'm having a look, I don't see anything coming in. Yeah, I don't, nothing seems to be coming in related to this, so I think we're good here.
Okay, Jeopardy music is playing loud and clear, we'll call for the vote.
Halfway there. Everyone's got their voting fingers warmed up, this is great. Okay, we're up to 17 of 27, oh, 22, big jump. 25, there we go. So we're pretty well good here, we've got 25, 26 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstain.
Perfect, thank you, Delaney, that is carried. We'd now like to take some time to recognize a few people. First up, I would like to acknowledge Chuck Fossey for the years he has spent as Chair of MCGA. The board would like to thank him for his leadership, and I personally would like to thank him for his mentorship during this time as your current Chair. Next, I would like to recognize John Sanborn from Benito for his service to the board. John unfortunately stepped down from the board this past fall. The board made the decision to leave the position vacant until our next election, which will be held this fall. If anyone is interested in putting their name forward or is looking for more information, feel free to reach out to any of the directors or staff. Finally, it is my pleasure to share with you the recipient of our 2021 Canola Award of Excellence. Traditionally, we would make this announcement at the Crop Connect Conference banquet, where we would celebrate together in person. This year, we will celebrate virtually, and we would encourage any of you who know this individual to reach out and share your congratulations. All right, I've made you wonder long enough, I'm sure you're dying with anticipation. Here's your 2021 Canola Award of Excellence winner.
Each year, the Manitoba Canola Growers Association recognizes the accomplishments of an individual or organization for their contributions to the sustained growth and prosperity of Manitoba's canola industry with the Canola Award of Excellence. This year's recipient has been very involved within canola organizations and renewable fuel organizations, which has led to the development and substantial growth of canola-based biodiesel demand in Manitoba and Canada. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in agricultural engineering from the University of Manitoba. He was a director on the Manitoba Canola Growers Association for 14 years, holding various executive positions and contributing to committees including biodiesel, research, canola performance trials, communications and member relations. He brought a strong farmer voice to his extended board roles, sitting on the Canadian Canola Growers Association, Canola Council of Canada, Biodiesel Association of Canada and Canadian Renewable Fuels Association boards. The Manitoba Canola Growers would like to thank this year's recipient for his contributions to the sustained growth and prosperity of Manitoba's canola industry. Please join us in congratulating Brian Churney with the 2021 Canola Award of Excellence.
I would like to thank the Board of Directors of the Manitoba Canola Growers Association for honoring me with this recognition. I am humbled by this Canola Award of Excellence and believe it should really be credited to the people that I've had the opportunity to meet, learn from and work with along the way. Someone long ago advised me to always try to be in a room where you can learn from others. My involvement with the canola industry has given me ample opportunities to do this. Fellow board members and staff of the canola and renewable fuels associations have given me the opportunity to learn and grow. I would like to thank these many people for their capabilities, efforts and friendships that have been developed over the years. I truly value them. Thank you again for the special recognition. I accept it on behalf of a team that has worked and continues to work tirelessly to improve the viability of canola production in Canada.
Congratulations Brian on that well-deserved award. Delaney, is there any final questions or comments that you, you're seeing there?
Thanks Clayton, just one comment Ian Robson wanted to pass on his thanks to both Chuck and John for their help at the Canola Growers, and I certainly would be remiss in not thanking them as well. Chuck and John were both instrumental as I was on boarded to the organization three and a half years ago, which feels both like yesterday and a lifetime ago, and it's been an amazing journey. So definitely want to make sure that I thank them for their part in that, it's, it's been instrumental and greatly appreciated. So, and congratulations to Brian, had a great, great job, exciting for Manitoba's biofuel mandate, biodiesel mandate to, to be changed thanks to the groundwork that Brian's laid.
Perfect. On that celebratory note, as Chair, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending. A recording of this meeting will be made available on our website in coming days if you want to relive the magic. Thank you, everyone.